Welcome to the city council meeting this evening. We have a lot of agenda items, and so I will cut it short with the small talk. But Madam clerk, would you please read the roll?
Mr. Bozen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Childs? Mr. Greider?
Here.
Ms. Wilder?
Here.
And Mr. Foyce?
Here.
All right, thank you. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. The pledge this evening will be led by Kelly Folley, City Clerk.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended and the minutes of the June 6, 2022, regular session as proposed and the minutes of the June 9, 2022, special session proposed.
All right, the motion has been made with the second, and the amendments are removed from the consent agenda, item 1B6, to be considered after the consent agenda, and to amend Public Hearing Number Two for the CIP pipelining and the reason due to the bid received being higher than the estimate and a miscommunication between staff on agenda action. So those are the amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. We have an amended agenda. The first up, we have our oral comments.
We have two.
Two are the...
First is youth art team.
All right, our first is a presentation by the youth art team, Heidi Footman, for the youth art team, so could you please join us?
Hi, I'm youth art team. I'm Heidi Footman from the youth art team. We're at 325 East Park Avenue, and I have a couple of artists here. We have some exciting news and an invitation to share, so you guys make sure to introduce yourselves, tell them your names.
My name's Emma Footman, and so eighty artists have created 1,250 feet of mural on the Fourth Street Bridge since 2017, and we've done that through seven summer camps and one big session last fall.
My name is Cedric Matlock, and I'm with the youth art team, and I am happy to announce that we have finished our mural project on the Fourth Street Bridge, and I will announce the name tomorrow. We will have the party, we have a party tomorrow, too. The party will be from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on June 21st, and we are inviting the council and the public to come see the party.
All right, thank you so much, and I just want to... So several years ago, Heidi came in and talked about this project, about infusing youth art with our pedestrian bridge, and it's been good to see all of the progress taking place, and there was a little bit of a challenge this year because, as you know, we're working on the bridge, and we want to thank you so much for being a good sport. We probably had about four to six weeks' worth of work, we hope, but we want to thank you for kind of working through with that. The youth art is incredible, and we're asking everyone to come on out tomorrow so you can see the project and support our young people in our community. So thank you so much, and your mom rocks, so just in case you didn't know, the mayor said that. All right, all right, thank you so much, all right. All right. Next, we have Margaret Whiting to talk about Clean Energy Go.
Hello, everybody. I'm Margaret Whiting, and I live at 1974 Charis in Waterloo, and I've lived in Waterloo for over forty years. I came here today because I'm very concerned about climate change. I'm worried that my grandchildren and future generations are going to have to be dealing with so many disasters. Already in Iowa, we have very extreme weather events, much more flooding than ever before, and stronger and more frequent tornadoes and even derechoes, and hotter temperatures, and just more extreme weather of any kind of weather event we're talking about. So the national governments and the state government and also city governments almost make changes quickly in order to avoid crossing tipping points, which will make everything much worse. Waterloo should have a clean energy plan. We should be building public electric vehicle charging stations around the city. We should be installing rooftop solar on all our city buildings. We should phase in electric vehicle, electric buses and electric service vehicles. Clean energy will keep money at a local level and create a lot of local jobs. It's not only the right thing to do, but it's the least expensive form of energy now. There was a recent study filed with the Iowa Utilities Board that shows that if mid-American energy were to retire every coal plant that it has in Iowa by 2030, then ratepayers in Iowa would save $1.2 billion. The city of Des Moines already passed a resolution for clean energy. They say by 2035, they're going to use only carbon-free electricity. Other cities around Iowa are working on similar resolutions, so I ask you, city council members, to please pass a clean energy resolution for Waterloo so that we can work together on this important project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And as you know, Councilman Greider had brought forth resolutions slash proclamation and speakers probably about within the last couple months, so we've been working on that, contacting our partners, whether it's that you and I, whether it was our energy company, and speaking to environmental council, trying to put things together for us to have something to present. So hopefully next month, we'll have something to present to all of you that comes from a combination of different sources, so thank you for your presentation. Also, oral presentation still, if you would like to address the city council on non-agenda-related items, please come up and state your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts.
Wayne Nathan, 548 Cloverdale, Waterloo. On the corner of Broadway and Vinton Avenue on the northwest corner, there's a house that is in extremely, extremely bad repair. It's an ice sore, and this needs to be, there's no other way than other than to make, tear it down. If you have not seen it, it's not hard to see when you go by there, and so I would like, I would hope that somebody would get out there and take a look at it and make that decision to tear it down. It's got windows broken out, the roof is caving in, and things of that nature. I don't know if there's been people entering in and out of that or not, because I don't sit there and watch, but we need to take care of that ice sore. It's a bad image for Waterloo. Thank you.
Mr. Nathan, have you contacted any of the departments or the code enforcement or anything, or have we not?
I have not at this time. I can't, if that's what it would take.
Do you know the address?
Not the, it's on the northwest corner.
You got it. Okay, all right, we got it. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. I sent in a notice to speak on the resolution that Margaret talked about as well. Did that get to the clerk's office?
No, but state your name and address for the record.
I sent it in on...
As I indicated, you still have to state your name and address for the record.
Sure, that's fine. EJ Gallagher.
We are coming back next month, but yes, sir.
I live at 801 Sheridan Road, Waterloo, Iowa, 50701, and I would encourage that the ordinance is amended, a resolution be adopted. I understand there was a change from goal from 2030 to 2035. I think it's the right thing to do. Des Moines has already done it. That doesn't necessarily mean that we should do it, but I think we should in this case, and I'm old enough to remember an old slogan about Waterloo Way wins, and I think this is another way that we can win in making sure that we have clean air and clean energy, and we can make this a better city for us to live in. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda-related items, so going a second time? All right, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So it's June, and June is Pride Month, and it's when we celebrate our LGBTQIA+ brothers, sisters, and siblings. And unfortunately, there's a lot going on in our country where these groups of people, particularly children that identify with these groups, are being targeted and used as political props to score points for elections, and that's really disheartening because one of the fundamental freedoms of being an American is your freedom of expression. We enshrine that in our First Amendment and several of our foundational documents. So to my LGBTQIA+ brothers, sisters, and siblings, I see you, we see you, we care about you, you belong in your part of us. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
Quick question for the chief, for Chief Fitzgerald, and that has to do with our ten-hour day schedule, and I was curious, sir, how that's working out and if it's helping to reduce overtime?
It's working out well. The combination of hiring and the ten-hour schedule is the sweet spot, and that is something that will reduce the overtime that we use.
So when these guys are working the ten-hour days, are we having difficulty getting them to work events like my Waterloo days and Fourth Street cruise?
No, not to my knowledge.
So we had enough people for those?
I would say that we did.
Oh, good. I'm not saying we didn't, I'm just asking if, because of the ten-hour days, if that's affecting us?
I don't think any more than it has in previous years that I've been here.
Okay, and the last question is, I know we're, we're trying to reduce overtime and the amount of time that people have to work on forced recall, but it seems to be a disparity if you're working early swing, that you end up getting forced recalled for five-plus hours where the other, other ten-hour day shifts are like two-hour blocks. Are we doing anything to try to rectify that?
I can get back to you on it. I can tell you that part of the reasoning behind someone getting forced overtime during a mid-level shift, mid-day shift, would be the time of day and incidents that we see occurrences happen.
Not like minimum staffing or anything?
Oh, minimum staffing-wise? No, I haven't seen that issue.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Appreciate your time, sir.
All right, council?
I'd like to make a motion to close the consent agenda, or close public hearing.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oral presentation's closed.
And I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with, including one, sorry, let me, with the exception of removing 1B6 for discussion, and then the approval also of 1A1, bills payments for June 13th in the amount of $1,703,648.59, and then for June 20th in the amount of $5,327,000, $327,252.72.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Council? Madam clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes, yes on everything, no on A12 and A27.
A12 is...
It's what I voted no on in the previous.
Yeah. And which was the other one?
27, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve change.
Well, hold on. Just wanted to quickly acknowledge Cindy Wells, John Berry, and Rosalyn Middleton, Rosalyn Middleton and Richard Berry, who's a new appointment to the Memorial Hall Commission. Cindy and John are library board of trustees, and Ms. Rosalyn is to the Met Transit Authority, so thank you for your service and stepping up to volunteer for our city boards.
Apologize for interrupting. Now, we swore in five officers today. Are we going to show that today, or is that going to be at a later meeting?
The video's 22 minutes long, so we'll do it at a later meeting. Just really quickly, we had the great opportunity to swore in five officers today and also three lieutenant-to-sergeant, officer-to-sergeant leadership positions, and we'll have that on the webpage for folks to look at, so please go and check that out, and then we will show that at a later meeting, so thank you, Mr. Bozen.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve change order number eight with Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Ryanbeck, Iowa, for an increase of $28,490 in conjunction with the FY 2021 Charlotte Road reconstruction, Hess Road to Highway 218 project contract number 1020, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Mr. Bozen?
I was just wondering if Mr. Knudsen can give us an overview on this, because it appears that it's, we're paying an extra for detour signs.
Mr. Knudsen, could you give us an update on the increase?
Jamie Knudsen, city engineer. Yes, this is for additional signage for Lost Island and for the theme park, as well as KOA and detour signing. During the, during the design process, we all missed it, myself, my staff, the engineering firm that designed the plans, we had detours and other signage up for KOA, the water park, and for the aisle, and we completely missed the theme park. So this is to add these signs back in or add these signs in now that the theme park's open, and we'll be closing the bridge after Labor Day.
So you already have the, those other signs in the budget?
Yes.
Just not the theme park signs?
Just not these signs, yes.
But there, but it's at a cost of $28,000 to us? I mean, I was, I know I had a number of calls on those three stop signs at $600 a stop sign, when I think our sign department can make them for about 100 bucks for all three of them. I just, I just have a real issue with how much money we're paying for these detour signs.
It's part of the contract, there is, there is a, there is an extra cost to it when there is a change order, regardless of what the project is, there is extra cost for that. These signs are not, some of the signs are going to be very large, they're specially printed signs that say specifically "theme park" and things like that. They're not just the simple road closed ahead or detour sign, so there are some of those that are going up, but there are also some of the very large printed signs that go along with it.
Yeah, just the $28,000 price tag, just that's my biggest concern, but thank you for your information.
All right, thank you. Madam clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
No.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number two?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for fiscal year 2023 CIP pipelining Phase 4A3, contract number 1063.
And then?
Second.
And then, did we just make the announcement that it was canceled?
Actually, we have to refer to the amendment.
All right. Okay. All right, so what do we do now?
We gotta do a motion to receive and file.
All right, so we had that motion to receive and file notice of public hearing, is that what Mr. Greider did? Is that what you did?
I think so.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone that has comments about this item? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Well, we have to, we have to make it official for her to read the bids. All right, so we have it, so...
Okay, I'll read the bids quick. We had one. It was from Institute Forum Technologies of Chesterfield, Missouri. They provided 5% security. Their base bid was $1,067,260, and their alternate, they had one, it was $13,500.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution rejecting all bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. We roll call on that one?
Yep.
Roll call, vote.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number three, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I can make a motion to receive, file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the FY 2023 One Year Action Plan for CDBG and Home Funds for the Waterloo Cedar Falls Consortium.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the One Year Action Plan for CDBG and Home Funds? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to close the, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving proposed funding recommendations set forth by the Community Development Board for the FY 2023 One Year Action Plan for CDBG and Home Program Funds for the Waterloo Cedar Falls Home Consortium.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, any comments? Madam clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number four?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for an amendment number six to the Martin Road Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan to expand the boundaries, update projects, and project budgets to be included in the plan and other general updates to the plan.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam clerk, do we have any comments on file?
We do not have any comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to item number four on the agenda?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. I recall, I'm not sure whether it was the last council meeting or the council meeting before that, you folks went into executive session for the purchase of more property, and now we're expanding the liability of us citizens, increased taxes, or whatever is going to happen, fees, whatever, to expand Martin Road. We've asked you not to expand these TIFs, and that's what you're doing again, and we're buying more land, we've got more land out there that's vacant, and we have people that want to buy or move on to it, and then we sell it to them for a dollar. I think it's time to stop that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Was there anyone else that would like to speak to this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area, determining that the development or redevelopment of said area is necessary in the interest of the public, healthy, safety, or welfare, designating said area as appropriate for an urban renewal project and approving the plan.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, do you have questions on this item? Madam clerk, roll call, vote.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the newly described Martin Road Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan area in the city of Waterloo, county of Blackhawk, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Waterloo, county of Blackhawk, Waterloo Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with the urban renewal project.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, questions? Madam clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you, council. Number five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greider?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for an amendment to the city of Waterloo zoning ordinance number 5079 to update multiple sections, including changes for home occupations, accessory structures, solar facilities, stables, child daycare, industrial uses, and other miscellaneous updates.
Second.
That motion has, that motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to number five of the council agenda? Going a second time? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file the recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance, by amending multiple sections, including changes for home occupations, accessory structures, solar facilities, stables, child daycare, industrial uses, and other miscellaneous updates.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, are there any questions about, uh, this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I just am really excited that we are going to expand where child daycare services can be provided in the city.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, madam clerk?
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number six, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for a request by the City of Waterloo to vacate Court Avenue south of Hoggle Street in the M one light industrial district located north and west of one ten Court Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to item number six on the agenda today? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Not opposed, right? Uh, uh, that motion passed. Yes, sir. Okay, I got you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time in ordinance approving the request by the City of Waterloo to vacate Court Avenue south of Hoggle Street in the M one light industrial district located north and west of one ten Court Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, Mr. Bowzen?
Thank you. I was just curious if we've had any issues with this property with code enforcement? Because based on the pictures that were included in this packet, I mean, it's, it's, it looks like a salvage yard. There's no fencing.
Right.
Uh, are we gonna require fencing?
Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, uh, callsman Bowzen, you're exactly correct. This was brought to us by code enforcement. They had some issues out there, people throwing junk out here. So we're hoping through the vacate process, we can turn this into a potential development lot, clean up, clean it up, and, and put in potential fencing if we need to, um, to help alleviate some of the, the dumping.
Yeah, because it's, it's, it looked like a code enforcement nightmare on the pictures that were presented to us.
All right, um, so we had a motion to consider and file for this first time. Uh, madam clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, madam clerk?
Uh, Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Yep, second.
That motion has been made with the second, I think. Um, uh, madam clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr., uh, Foyce?
Thanks, sir. I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the sale and conveyance of City Rightofway located east of thirty-one sixty-five West Airline Highway, an amount of one dollar to Superior Properties LLC with tax-free rebates eight years at seventy-five percent and two years at seventy percent for the construction of a new twelve thousand square foot contractor office warehouse building with approval of a development and minimum assessment agreement in the amount of fifty-six, sorry, five hundred sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, the public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
Uh, there are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned Rightofway located east of thirty-one sixty-five West Airline Highway to Superior Properties LLC in the amount of one dollar, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, counsel, questions?
I just had a quick question, sir.
Yes, sir.
For Noel on, on, when, and I, I sent you some emails. I, I see you responded to me during the meeting. Uh, I have this question on when we're, we'll see some positive cash flow for, from these tax abatements that will be going towards either the TIF or, or, uh, the general fund.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So item number seven, um, the city has actually no cost in the project. Um, we were able to get some rise funds to build Geraldine Road, which it'll connect to. That was actually paid back by the La Forge Project, um, back after the two thousand and eight flood when they located there. So the rise funds have been paid back. The rest of the expenses to create this lot were paid by the developer. So with this lot, essentially, on year one of them paying to property taxes, we'll be receiving, um, some, some taxes into the TIF district and some of them going to the debt service levy. About three thousand one hundred going to the debt service levy, about three thousand nine hundred going into the TIF districts. Um, so those can, those can help us in, in various ways, keeping the, the debt service levy down as well as helping to create more lots in the TIF districts.
So out of a five hundred and sixty thousand assessed value, we're gonna get about seven thousand dollars?
That is correct.
For your, up till we, we run this out on seventy-five?
Yep.
Okay.
That is correct. The reason they're getting the rebates is obviously we're, we've identified the ability to give them some additional right of ways. We're putting that on the tax rolls, but we're competing with other communities that give away land for a dollar as well um, by letting them buy the private land, giving them back the rebate, so it's the same as getting it for the dollar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, counsel. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yep.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a development of minimum assessment agreement with Superior Properties LLC in the amount of five hundred sixty thousand dollars and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, madam clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, number eight, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr., um, um...
Nichols.
Oh, Nichols, I knew that.
Thank you.
Got a lot more to go.
We got twenty more to go. I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the sale and conveyance of city, conveyance of city property located at thirty-one eighty West Airline Highway to Airline Storage LLC in the amount of one dollar for the construction of four eight thousand square foot buildings with rebates of five years at fifty percent for Phase Two with approval and development and approval of a development and minimum assessment agreement in the amount of, uh, seven hundred and ten thousand dollars for Phase One.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Uh, madam clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to item number eight on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Nichols?
I'd like to make a motion to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, hearing closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at thirty-one eighty West Airline Highway to Airline Storage LLC in the amount of one dollar for the construction of four eight thousand square foot buildings with rebates of five years at fifty percent for Phase Two and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute necessary documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving, uh, development and minimum assessment agreement with Airline Storage LLC in the amount of seven hundred and ten thousand dollars for Phase One and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Uh, madam clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, number nine, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bowzen?
Thank you. I'd like to, uh, make a motion, receive, file, proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and reallocation of unspent proceeds of the general obligation bonds series two thousand eighteen A in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to twenty-five thousand dollars from two thousand eighteen? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, counsel, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number ten, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bowzen?
I'd like to make a motion to receive file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and reallocation of unspent proceeds of general obligation bonds Series 2018B in the amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose?
Oppose? All right. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Hearing closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number 11?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Nichols?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing request to fulfill Level Two police body armor needs.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to body armor needs at this time? Are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
A motion to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of bid documents, specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions on this item? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
We need probably one more. Oh, okay, all right. It's harmony. It's like it's all sounds like one. Yeah, okay, we're, Madam Clerk?
All right, we got one bid. It was from CCG Safety Gear of Alitha, Kansas. For the year 2022 to 2023, their bid amount was $927. For 2024, $953. 2025, $961. And 2026, $980.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving award of contract to CCG Safety Gear of Alitha, Kansas, and authorizing mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number 12, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and request to fulfill FY 2023 police ammunition needs.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? It's number 12 for ammunition needs going a second time?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming an approval of bid document specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk, please read the bids.
All right, we had one bidder this time again. It was Kessler Police Supply, Kessler Police Supply Incorporated of Jeffersonville, Indiana. They bid on seven different types of ammunition, so I will read those now. 12,000 rounds of 9mm 147 grain jacketed hollow point federal HST or similar, $391.50 per 1,000 rounds. Number two, 85,000 rounds of Federal American Eagle 9mm 147 grain full metal jacket or similar, $251.90 per 1,000 rounds. Number three, 2,000 rounds of Federal 12 gauge 2 and 3/4 inch shot shells, double zero buckshot, 9 pellet, low recoil or similar, $171.30 per 250 rounds. Number four, 2,000 rounds of Federal 12 gauge 2 and 3/4 inch shot shell, 1 ounce low recoil slug or similar, $179.58 per 250 rounds. Number five, 8,000 rounds of Federal 223 caliber 64 grain soft point tactical rifle, urban or similar, $339.24 per 500 rounds. Number six, 35,000 rounds of Federal American Eagle .223 caliber 55 grain FMJ or similar, $251.90 per 500 rounds. And finally, 1,000 rounds of Hornady GMX TAP Heavy Barrier 308 caliber 165 grain no bid per 500 rounds. And that's it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving award of contracts to Kessler Police Supply Jefferson, Iowa in conjunction with the FY 2023 police ammunition needs and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
I just had a question, sir. Is it, would that be okay?
That motion has been made with the second, Mr. Bowzen.
I, I just was curious on what we, what we do about the ones we have no bid. Like, the last one came in as no bid. We look for a different vendor or we use them and just don't have a bid from them?
I can get that for you. I did not know that the last bid wasn't fulfilled. So if it's not, we do need that ammunition. And a lot of times with the lead time necessary to order ammunition, it can be, you know, six to nine months out. And I could be being generous with the six to nine months, that we still may have some time to put that out there again and to get that last order situated. So what do we need to do with that one?
At this point, nothing.
Yeah, it's off because it's no bid now, but that doesn't mean we don't need it, clearly.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
And I just want to correct a typo in the resolution. It should say Jeffersonville, Indiana, instead of Jefferson, Iowa.
Do we know it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take 13, 14, and 15?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. Number 13 is a resolution establishing a commission on opportunity for children, youth, and young adults in Waterloo. Number 14 is a resolution establishing a task force on gun violence in Waterloo. And number 15 is a resolution directing a study on the compensation of all non-bargaining positions.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that has questions about these three items? Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, thank you. 16, 17, and 18.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. A resolution approving one year memorandum of understanding with the Waterloo Police Protective Association for the lateral transfer incentive package and bonus administration administrative guidelines authorizing mayor and human resources director to execute said document and rescinding Resolution Number 2022-329.
Second.
All right, keep going. 17 and 18.
17, a resolution approving automobile public officials' errors and omissions, law enforcement employment practices, and umbrella liability coverage with Travelers Insurance, excess umbrella liability coverage with Allied Property Insurance, coverage with Chubb, and cyber liability with Cowbell, together with the recommendation of approval from the insurance committee and authorizing the city clerk to execute necessary documents. And 18, a resolution approving renewal agreement with Delta Dental for fees associated with administration and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
And Mr. Nichols, take 19 too. That may.
Yeah, yeah, it does. And 19, a resolution approving renewal agreement with Walmart Blue Cross Blue Shield for fees associated with administration, network access, and stop loss and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
All right, thank you. All right. 16, 17, 18, and 19. Is there anyone with questions on these items? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On the change in the memorandum of understanding, I'm just curious if we've yet to identify a funding source for this $249,700 in additional pay.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Again, my answer remains the same as it was in previous meetings. The, the gap can be filled with savings that we have through salaries and other savings we have on an annual basis.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowzen?
No one's 16, yes, and 17, 18, and 19.
All right, thank you. Could someone take 20, 21 through 23? Wait, let me look at that here. Yep, 20 through 23.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Greider?
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. Number 20 is a resolution approving a 2% salary increase for non-bargaining employees, a 12.1% increase for the assistant chief of police and fire chief, a 10.3% increase for police captains, and a 6% increase for battalion chiefs effective July 1, 2022. 21 is a resolution approving installation of a 25 mile per hour speed hump at the 100 block of Sunder Street. 22 is a resolution approving the Aquatic Center Design Contract with Invision Architecture in the amount of $766,000 and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And 23 is a resolution approving amendment number one to Gates Park Master Plan update in the amount of $21,150 and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made, that motion has been, motion has been made with the second to 20, 21, 22, and 23. Is there anyone in the audience that have questions about these items? Please state your name and address for the record.
Leanne Even. I'm here as an employee of the City of Waterloo Deputy City Clerk. Respectfully, I would like to address the council, the mayor, and most respectfully, Kelly Felkley, City Clerk. I wanted to address the issue with the council because I don't believe as a non-bargaining employee, we've been allowed the opportunity to address this issue with the council. I have no voice or representation other than speaking directly with the council on this resolution. Excuse me. As deputy city clerk and working with the city clerk, I know we budgeted 3% for at least the city clerk's office as non-bargaining employees, same as the union negotiated for its members. But now you're proposing that some non-bargaining employees receive a 2% increase while some are going to receive 12.1%, 10.3%, and 6%. My question is, how was this determined? Has any of the council spoken with the employees that are non-bargaining employees to question what their job is in the City of Waterloo? What do we do as employees? Have you talked to their supervisors to see what they do as employees? And what if they've done reviews and how they progress for the City of Waterloo? Since I've worked here for two years, the union negotiated raises as non-bargaining employees. As a non-bargaining employee was given less than what the union bargained for those years, even though we budgeted for those increases. I, it makes me very sad that I have to look at leaving my team or the city hall team that runs efficiently or a well-oiled engine and apply with different departments within the city and make a lateral move as an assistant department head simply to make more money. How is this efficient? How is this a wise business plan on any level? Mr. Bowzen presented another resolution to approve, to do a study with regards to non-bargaining raises and structure, stating that the city is experiencing difficulty in attracting candidates to employment positions. What about the employees that work here and serve the community already? Do you wonder why we can't keep qualified employees for the City of Waterloo? It's offensive. I can personally say I've brought revenues to the City of Waterloo through my work with income offset, $40,000 each year and $50,000 plus this year. I've offered grant opportunities to the city that we wouldn't have known about otherwise. And thinking outside the box, I brought this to the city. And I, I would like the council to look at that and recognize me as unvalued employees and give them the same opportunities as these employees that are going to make 12 and 10 and 6% increases. I hope you value what we do as employees and what your job is here tonight. I had a hand in that. Everybody sitting up here had a hand in that. And I, I want to know that I'm valued as an employee. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I have a comment on number 20 and 22. I understand we have good employees in the City of Waterloo. I also understand who pays their wages. I checked my Social Security increase because I'm on a fixed income Social Security. And I made 59 cents an hour more this year than last year based on 160-hour work week or work month. We're the ones that are paying that. And we look at these different things and these different increases that are being proposed. That comes from increased taxes. Understand, I looked deeper into the, to the computer that it was been, has been budgeted for next year, but also a tax increase has been budgeted for next year, correct? Number 22, Aquatic Center Design. I have heard through the grapevine or maybe up here at a council meeting one time that we're talking about designing a swimming pool. And I think it was commented Olympic-sized swimming pool at the Sportsplex. But yet we're going to spend all this money at Gates and at the other swimming pools because they're outdated. And I don't say they're not needing, not needing replacement. But why not put one pool in this town that's indoors and you can use it 365 days a year? Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
Forest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I would also like to speak on item number 20. You talk about a 2% for the non-bargaining folks. I assume those that are quoted as 12.1 will not have the 2% added to that, that it will be just what is printed. But we just negotiated a new contract with our police chief just a month or so ago. Will that new police chief's contract be increased by 2% already after just a month? I have a lot of people asking me. Can you answer that?
Yes.
Yes, he will get another 2% after just negotiating a new contract. Thank you.
Right. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would hope that the resolution that we, that we passed on the non-bargaining pay study will look deep into this and correct these inequities that we have and, and value our non-bargaining employees the way we should be valuing them. Because I do believe they've fallen behind the wayside with our, with our, our union contracts. And, and we need to, to represent them as much as we do with the other ones. So I'm really pleased that this council unanimously voted to pass that resolution for the non-bargaining study. It may shock us when it comes back. And, and if it does, then we need to put together a plan. You know, if it's one, two, or three-year plan to make it right so that we can work with, with our non-bargaining employees and show them that we value them. I, I think that what people don't understand on this, on item number 20 on some of these pay raises is the fact that our non-bargaining salaried, or not, not salaried, but they are salaried, I guess, staff in the fire department, the battalion chiefs and the chief, at the police department, the captains, and, and the major. As the contracts keep changing and, and their benefit package changes, they get more time off, they, they, the money is, is narrowing so close that you make more money as a, as a lieutenant than you do as a captain. You have sergeants making more money than a captain. And we, we have, we have compressed that so much that in order to, to attract qualified people to work in these command positions, that, that we need to do something to, to, to adjust the pay because we continue to, to sign contracts that bring everyone else up and yet these people stay down. So I, I, it was a tough nut to swallow, but I, I do support this because of what's been going on over the years between, between our bargaining unit and our non-bargaining employees.
And the study could reveal similar situations in other departments as well.
I'm, I'm afraid it will.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you. 24, 25, 26, and 27, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr., Mr. Vois?
All right, thank you, sir. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Breitling Kiper Landscape Architects in the amount of $602,250 in conjunction with the transforming Gates and Burns Parks project and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. 25 is a resolution approving a professional services agreement between the City of Waterloo and Breitling Kiper Landscape Architects for services at Unity Plaza in an amount not to exceed $18,000 and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. 26 is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Pro West and Associates of Walker, Minnesota in the amount of $3,950.99 in conjunction with programming and Arc GIS for the digital sidewalk solution for the engineering department and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And 27 is a resolution approving a 150 square foot permanent storm sewer easement agreement with Pierre Endeavour Marion located at 930 Progress Avenue and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Anyone have questions on 24, 25, 26, and 27? Counsel? Just quickly, for the work that's being done on behalf of our aquatic centers and our pools and the transformation of areas that need a lot of help and support, I just want to thank Paul Hudding. I've seen Paul has been with the city for a few years. But Paul has been pounding the pavement, trying to talk to everyone he can to try to get some funding for these projects, not just because they're shiny objects, because he know the neighborhoods, the children, and the community deserves it. So I just, I've seen him working firsthand. It's hard to keep up with him. But I just want to thank him and his staff and foundations that have come on board or will be coming on board thus far. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take 28, 29, 30, and 31? Mr. Nichols?
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. Number 28, a resolution approving assignment and assumption of development agreement with Union at North Crossing LP in conjunction with the development agreement originally approved April 4, 2022 with Urban Development Holdings LLC for property located north of 501 Lakeside Street and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 29, a resolution granting the mortgage and security interest to Crystal Distribution for property located at 1442 1508 and 1620 Sycamore Street and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 30, a resolution approving an incentive payment to Grow Cedar Valley in the amount of $46,500 for works toward fiscal year 2022 economic development. And 31, a resolution approving fiscal year 2023 professional services agreement with Grow Cedar Valley in the amount of $30,625 with $58,625 in potential incentive funds and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that would like to comment on 28, 29, 30, or 31? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I wonder if Noel could just give us an overview on what we, we're paying a $46,500 as an incentive and what, what they brought to the table to, for this amount? Because I know they do a lot of good things for us.
Yeah. Noel?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. This last payment under the Grow Cedar Valley contract, so they essentially have a base payment portion of their contract and there's an incentive payment portion of their contract. This includes a portion of 14,250 for the base payment request and then the 46,500 in the incentive. The incentives are broken out based on new taxable value created, The incentives are broken out based on new taxable value created, based on job creation, and based on acre of development. So for this one, the Warren Transport Project, there's $14,000 based on a new $3.5 million project being created and new taxable value, $10,000 based on four jobs. Those four jobs have to be, meet the High Quality Job Creation Program. They're paying $25.70 per hour. The 1849 is a requirement by the state of Iowa, so they're well above that. And then there is a portion for one acre of development at $16,000 for the multiple development acres out there. So it's broken out into those sections of how they're paid for the incentives, primarily for the Warren Transport Project.
So can you give me those numbers again for, on Warren? It was $40,000 for the four job creations, $10,000 a job, correct?
Correct. $10,000 on the four jobs, $16,000 for the acres, and then $14,000 based on the 3.5 million new taxable value.
How do we add up to $46,500 in this resolution, then?
Then there's a, oh, I'm sorry. Then there's a semi-annual performance payment of $6,500 that's included in there as part of their marketing.
Do we need to amend this, then? Because it just, this is a resolution adopting the...
It should have the attachment of the invoices broken out with all of the incentives in there.
Is that a no?
What are we, what are we, what are we?
What are we disputing?
Well, I'm just saying that this resolution, we're just approving the incentive for $46,500 that we have read here, but he's got a lot more payments in that.
Looks like the incentive adds up.
I'm just talking about what we're saying right here.
Is that, or 6,500?
The amount for incentive payment, incentive request, work towards fiscal year.
Right, but I'm just saying right here, we've got another $14,000 that's in this. I'm just saying, is that separate?
That was approved separately through finance. I was just explaining the differences in the overall contract. I'm sorry.
My mistake. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And then to add to Mr. Bozen's comments about the things that we see with regards to numbers, we also have to take a look at the leadership we've seen as well from work with diversity and inclusion with our businesses to taking leadership with the placemaking project that we're currently working on, the work that we do to bring our multi-cities together, just overall quality of what we receive on so many levels. So I want to thank them for their efforts. I don't know if this is going to pass, but just want to thank them for all of their efforts too, because there's a lot of intangibles not seen in this. But Madam Clerk?
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes, on 28, 30, 31, no on 29.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take 32, 33, and 34?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to adopt a resolution to amend and restate the development agreement with a Vita Developments LLC originally approved May 5, 2008, and July 16, 2018, including associated amendments and minimum assessment agreements to assign the agreement to new ownership and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 33 is a resolution approving a subordination agreement between the City of Waterloo Self-Help Credit Union Self-Help Ventures Fund and Central Property Holdings LLC for the grocery store project in Franklin Street and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And 34 is a resolution approving the sales order, and I'm going to butcher this name. Could you?
Ribicini.
Okay. Studios Inc. in the amount of $326,902, including the contingency allowance of $35,000 to complete the exhibit elements of the Sullivan Brothers Family Memorial.
Second.
I said it like I knew.
Thank you.
Power perceives, power achieves. Is there anyone that would like to comment about these three items? And then I know we have one speaker who will come up in just a second with an update.
Wayne Nathan, 548 Cloverdale. On number 33, can you expand a little bit what's taking place on this? You can?
Yes, sir. I have, after you finish, and Mr. Dreyer, I have someone that's going to come up and give a synopsis of what's happening.
Okay, can I return, then?
You have other questions about it, or you got other questions?
It might be answered if somebody else is coming up here.
All right, yes, sir. Allowed in this instance. Yes, sir.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. On item number 33, I dug deeper into the computer, and I guess the question is a yes or no answer. Are we basically giving Central Properties Holding free money with no interest, no portion of the business ever coming back to the city, other than in future property taxes which never pay back? Thank you.
All right. Mr. Johnson, I think you have a nice update for us this evening.
Mayor Council members, my name is Eric Johnson. I represent the developers of All-In Grocers, item number 33. Today's request is simply an updated subordination agreement. This request came back to you in December, and since that time, the financing pieces have moved around a little bit, and we're hoping to close in the next week. And the lender is requiring this subordination agreement to be updated. So that's what's going on. There's nothing different than really what was approved in December, other than some of the numbers that are plugged into the loans that are being made for this development have changed. I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have on this project. And I'm, there might be some, but I'm glad to answer any questions you may have on this.
I did have a quick question for you, sir, because in December and early January, we were pushed to approve this because we were closing within a week.
Yep.
And now it's back to us, and we're closing again.
Yeah.
And what happened between December and today?
Yeah, well, a lot's happened since then. I mean, I'm going to tell you what you already know. This is not an easy project, okay? This is a hard project. If this was an easy project, Hy-Vee or Aldi would have picked it up years ago. But this is what I would describe as a necessary project for the development of this area and the revitalization we're trying to do with that. Having said that, the developers, this project's gone on for quite a while, and the developers have gone down different roads and have doors shut. And I've said to myself more than once, I guess this is over. And then I get a call that, nope, we're going down this road and we're picking up this piece. And that's, that's what's happened every step of the way with this project. And in December, we thought that there was a, I don't want to throw anybody on the bus, we thought that there was government funding that was imminent, and it didn't happen. And so those funds were found from other lenders who agreed to put money into this project. So it just keeps getting reconstituted. And, you know, I can tell you that the developers wish more than anybody that this project would have closed a year ago, because everybody knows where prices have gone in the last year, and they haven't gone in the right direction when you're developing.
That's my concern, sir, because you're looking at about a 30% price increase in supplies right now. This was, I was understanding that this was closing in January, and so if it's not closing until maybe June 22, does he have all of his financing lined up? Because I'm just, I'm concerned because, you know, August 17, we're at five years.
Yeah. So that's what the lender is required, is all financing be lined up. There's a sources and uses that I believe maybe Michelle has been provided, maybe not. I don't know. But there's a sources and uses. Iowa Title Guarantee is acting as the closing agent for all the lenders, and there are more than six lenders involved. The money is coming in, updated budgets from the general contractor with the increases that are factored into that, and it's covered. And so that's, that's why they're finally ready to close now. You know, we thought that in January, but I really do think it is going to happen here in the next week or so.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right. Mr. Nichols, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Any other, any other comments?
I mean, I'll just, I mean, address Mr. Dreyer's comment. Whether this is a grant, it was always a grant. There was always a grant portion coming from the city to make this project happen. The city secured their grant by a mortgage on that property with the understanding that to get construction, there was going to be construction financing from construction lenders. And those lenders, of course, are going to want to be in the first lien position, and we're always going to subordinate to that. So trying to answer.
Subordinate, subordinate, is that a new phrase just for this project, or is that...
No, subordination just, you know, when you're talking about liens and mortgages, you're talking about priority. And usually the thought is first in time, is first there. And a subordination just says that we agree that a later filed document or a mortgage will take priority over us, and that's all subordination is, everybody agreeing who's going to be in what position.
Why don't you keep going while you got him up there, and then we'll go to Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, because my concern is that cash-wise, we've got about $900,000 in this project. Because we just gave Mr., we just gave All-In Grocers $200,000 in the bill payments this, today. Came in, it came in late. So it was approved today, another $200,000. And so I believe we had $400,000 to help with the acquisition of the land, and then we had another $500,000 forgivable grant, and that's not counting everything else that we've done in this development agreement with House of Hope, with the parking lot situation and everything else. So I think we're somewhere pushing $2, $2.5 million on this, a total city investment, not cash.
Yeah.
I mean, am I incorrect in that amount for at least $2 million, Noel? I'm just asking a question.
The amount that we put into it, you know, it just depends on everything that you count in there. Directly, there was the CVS lot acquisition at $400,000, then there was an additional grant later at $500,000. Obviously, there's some other additional costs, working with the House of Hope that we were working with before the project, but it definitely aided the project for the location. We worked on the parking lot relocation for Walnut Court into a better location there to, again, strengthen and expand this commercial site. So it's, there's a lot of costs in there that we may have done otherwise without the project, but we definitely, you could definitely include them for the project too. So it's probably in that $900,000 to, you know, 1.5 to $2 million range.
Thank you.
So Noel, why was there a grant for the first person to purchase a CVS property?
You know, working through the development agreement to try and get the property, that was what we thought was needed to make the project move ahead, was us basically splitting the cost. The cost of the lot was $750,000, so we provided $400,000 in grant. The developer provided $350,000 of their investment to get the, to get that site secured. The city secured the other sites through the projects I just noted. And then later on, there was a request to keep the project moving ahead for an additional $500,000 that the council moved.
And how long prior to that? Because that particular piece of property had been out there a long time, and folks hadn't been able to make the numbers work per square foot to put anything in that particular area. So that was also a portion of it. How did the House of Hope, prior, even prior to this project, was there a conversation with the House of Hope needing a larger facility?
Correct. Originally, the House of Hope wanted us to help them with the, that building was failing. It was in rough shape. They wanted to build a brand-new building, actually where the Judge Platt House is. And so when we didn't demolish that, because JSA fixed it up, they found the Christiansen Building and the wall in the Church Row neighborhood, so we were able to revitalize a building in the Church Row neighborhood, as well as open up this site over here. So, you know, we're trying to, I guess, create as many positive projects in the city as we can as we move along.
There's a lot of moving pieces to this entire project. And Noel, have we had other developments that have gone on four, five, 10 years before?
There's, you know, there's a lot of projects, and this comes up a lot with, you know, meeting with council, is a lot of them aren't out in the public at the beginning like this one was to move through additional years. You know, there's a lot of projects out there, Hydrite or something, where they do an expansion that we've been talking to them for three years in confidence, and then they finally move ahead with the project. So it's not that uncommon for projects to take a while to evolve and happen.
All right. Mr. Nichols?
Yes, and maybe Noel, you might be, might need to answer some of these questions. So it was my understanding as a part of the original development agreement that there was already a subordination clause within that development agreement. What about this situation makes us need to have an additional subordination clause?
Correct. I mean, Mr. Johnson noted, the development agreement will have wording in there saying, hey, we have a couple other development agreements on there, they're transferring the LLC name. So we take into account needed steps that are probably going to have to happen, and then we bring them back to council for the actions. As noted, you know, we approved a subordination agreement before. Now that they need new dates in it, we're bringing it back to council to update that document and approve it.
New dates, okay. Noel, if I just chime in, I mean, I think what's in your standard development agreement is some, what I would call generic language indicating that you're going to do a subordination, but the lenders, they want specific language about that before they're going to do the closing.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I have followed this very closely through the years. I have also understand that we put out money day one. We have been paying interest on this money day one, the taxpayers have. And I have personally been told, I got the money, we're going to start in a month. That was probably a year ago. And I have stood here and heard the developer say, I've got the money, I've got the money. Now we're hearing it again today. And Mr. Johnson, I take his word for it. He's a great man, does a great job. But we have been paying interest on this. We have got a lot of money invested in this, and it's not coming back. Because we, with this agreement that we're about to sign, puts the City of Waterloo at the bottom of the list. Everybody else gets their money first, and the city is last. But that's where the taxpayers have always been, in this city is last. Thank you, sir. Have a great evening.
Kathy Mahoney, 1400 Denver Street. As I understand this, this All-In Grocery will be fantastic for our city. It is needed, it is long overdue. And as regards to the subordination agreement, one, not only did Mr. Johnson tell us it's standard, this is just updating something that was already done. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, if I come back up, Mayor?
Yep, let you, yeah, we'll discuss. Yes, sir.
Wayne Nathan, 548 Cloverdale. I would want to echo what Mr. Dilavu has said. Randy, not Randy, but Rodney Anderson has been between, up here. We've got a lot of different council faces up here now, but the former council and so forth, given excuses, excuses, and excuses, and time and time again, given excuses why he has not started this project. And always came out with, he had the money, but the project never got started. This been going on, I think it's five years or better. And I just want to remind this council that's here now, that how many times he's been up here, I cannot count, but it's been a lot. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, 32, 33, and 34?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes, on 32, 34, no on 33.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. 35, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, considering passed for the first time, an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo code ordinances by repealing Title IX Building Regulations, Chapter VII Rental Housing, and enacting in lieu thereof a new Title IX Building Regulations, Chapter VII Rental Housing.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Is there anyone with comments on this item? This is a counsel. Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. Hi. Sam Blatt, 107 Lafayette Street. I'm coming here today to speak on my support for this new rental ordinance that I and many others here in our community desperately need to see approved. This new rental ordinance is absolutely necessary. Renters are not second-class citizens, and we need more support and advocacy now more than ever, especially in the face of large rental companies and out-of-state landlords that scour Waterloo. A lot of predatory renting practices are going on, and not having this new supportive ordinance will continue to allow landlords and property managers to get away with harmful, unhealthy practices that only hurt our community further and cannot hurt our community as well. I've experienced bad landlords and good landlords, and the worst case, I actually know Barry, the rental inspector, by a first-name basis. He had to come to my property, well, my rental property, at least three or four times to monitor the situation and lack of progress until finally it was fixed, which took at least months and months of communication and inconveniences to both me and the city. And it does not compare to the horrors I have seen from peers in our community and residents living in rentals. This policy will provide more structure and a precedent to strengthen renting culture and more positive practices that will support people over profits, and that's the way it should be. Lastly, I would like to add that to make this work to the full extent, we need to hire more rental inspectors and hold accountability over this. Simply, we need more ongoing work. Thank you for your time.
All right, well spoken. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment?
Hi. Leon Begay, 204 Baltimore Street. Well, I speak to you today in support of this proposed ordinance. I'm a renter in Waterloo and have lived here for the past four years. I love this community, and I'm proud to have gotten to learn from and work alongside some amazing housing advocates in the city. Overall, this ordinance is a necessary step in the right direction where social equity is enacted by this city and its leaders. Landlords have a responsibility for the living conditions of their tenants, and these conditions should be in line with an approach that safeguards the health, safety, and welfare of people. That includes making sure that landlords who decide to set up here in Waterloo know that this city will make sure that they cannot operate housing if they do not hold that accountability to people here very seriously. That includes investing in their properties. That includes investing in their properties. Many neighborhoods would also have more of a chance to revitalize with this ordinance. Neglack leads to dilapidation, and that becomes the city's problem. Fair and equitable housing policy means less cost for the city. So this ordinance requires, but this ordinance will require more investment from the city as well. There is one housing inspector for the city, and I learned that, you know, there was one temporary position that was opened. That is not enough. More housing inspectors are needed to make safe housing possible here in Waterloo.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Anna Patch, 405 East Arlington Street in Waterloo, and I would also like to speak in favor of approving the amended rental ordinance. As a renter here in Waterloo myself for several years, as well as as a housing advocate, I'm aware, as I hope that you are as well, that too many families and tenants here are living with unsafe housing conditions such as mold, pests, lack of weatherization, things that are severely impacting all aspects of our individual and collective health and well-being. In addition, we also know that these impacts are disproportionately harming those who are already the most systemically, economically exploited. So I would like to join my colleagues and fellow tenants in the city of Waterloo, asking you to please unanimously pass the amended rental ordinance, as well as to follow through and deliver on the promise of hiring an appropriate number of rental inspectors, which is long overdue and will lead to the enforceability and the efficacy of this ordinance. In addition, I would also like to humbly ask the city council what the plan is for disseminating the new information about what this means for tenants and landlords once it's passed, because we know that, once it passes on paper, there's going to be a learning curve. So we'd love to make sure that tenants and landlords alike are aware of the effect that we hope this will have. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And with regards, well, we'll keep going. Anyone else? Yes, please come up.
Hello, I'm Vincent Givens. I live in CF, but I'm actually moving this week back to Waterloo where I was born and raised. I wanted to comment on the disproportionate effects of not having proper inspections done on apartment complexes. As my generation, first year of college, I kind of was the guinea pig generation that had to deal with the brunt of the backlash Waterloo and Cedar Falls got for being labeled one of the worst places to live for black people in the entire United States, which blew my mind, because how did we beat out the South of all places? And, you know, a lot of people wanted to blow back on that and say, we have great lives, we live in great places, we have good property here, we have great apartments, and sadly, we really don't. On my apartment block, you know, people were renting, but, you know, for every house that was being rented and occupied by a family, there were three graffiti, abandoned, brick up, boarded up houses right next door. There's not a lot of good places to live here, and I don't think anybody should shy away from that or cover it up or say that there is and that people aren't looking hard enough, because my friend lives in an apartment complex over by Allen, and when I go in there, all the signage is in French and English. And for people that know, a signage being in French means that there are a lot of Congolese, a lot of people from African countries that live there, and sadly, that apartment complex is one of the worst places I have ever seen. And I know that they cater to a lot of our immigrant communities, and we do have a lot of immigrant communities in Waterloo that get overshadowed and funneled into some of the worst places I've ever been in. And, you know, living in Cedar Falls for a year, I was completely blown away by the difference in property and the difference in the things that are handled and the difference in landlords and the difference in how many houses actually look like people live in them. So I really do hope that this goes somewhere and that the people of today are heard, so that we can, you know, stop shying away from this being a not-good place to live and actually push for it to be a better place to live. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jamisia Young, 1203 Randolph Street. I'm here in favor of this rental ordinance. I am a resident of Waterloo, I've been my entire life, and I'm also a housing coordinator. With my job, I'm responsible for housing the homeless, and one of the, one of my responsibilities is like inspections of, you know, these houses to make sure that they are, you know, upholding the, the codes and, yeah. And one thing that I've noticed is that I just feel like the relationship between, like the hegemonic relationship between tenant and landlord is just a breeding ground for inequality, because I've seen firsthand how, like, these conditions of these houses are terrible, and I wouldn't even want an animal to live in them, let alone a human being and their, you know what I mean, and, and their children. So it's, it's really disheartening that Waterloo, we, we don't already have these rules and regulations. So, yeah, I just really hope that this can pass, because we definitely need to see a change, so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, good evening. Michelle Jungers, I'm actually a resident of Cedar Falls. I live at 609 Olive Street in Cedar Falls, but I wanted to speak in support of this ordinance, this amendment. I was the managing attorney for the Waterloo office of Iowa Legal Aid for six years, and prior to that worked as a staff attorney for Iowa Legal Aid. I practiced in Waterloo for 10 years now, or it would have been 10 years now in, in private practice currently. I've practiced in other parts of the state, and they had really excellent housing inspection departments, and they had really great teeth for when landlords were not doing their job. And I'm really hopeful that this passes and that we can get those teeth, because this is not for all landlords, this is for bad landlords. Good landlords provide a service. And unfortunately, what I've seen since I've been in Waterloo, practicing in Waterloo, is that we have too many bad landlords. We have, for those of you who may not know, the highest rate of eviction in the state of Iowa. And as myself, prior to leaving Iowa Legal Aid, I spent one to three days in housing court watching families get evicted. And many times, they would walk in and say, well, I stopped paying my rent because my house does, has never been inspected, I've got bugs, I've got mold, I've, my ceiling's caving in, and unfortunately, that's not, you can't just not pay your rent. So when you show up to eviction court and say, magistrate, I didn't pay my rent, they gave me a notice, but I shouldn't have to pay my rent. The magistrate says, did you get the notice? Did you pay your rent? Okay, you're going to be evicted. And I'm just really hoping that with the change, with these changes, if they pass, that we can improve the housing stock for the, the citizens of Waterloo and hopefully improve some of our numbers in eviction rates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Mahoney, 1400 Denver Street. I'd like to add to everybody else's comments, and also note, when we hear that there's a high eviction rate in Waterloo, we're talking about families. So some family gets evicted, and their kid has to move, and maybe they spend a couple weeks on the street or in some grandmother's or cousin's house. They have to change school districts. And then, when they find a place, they might have to change school districts again, and this is so unstable for kids. And so if we did have better inspections and we did place a priority on providing good housing, we would reap those benefits, because kids could stay in the same school where they know the teacher, where they have their friends. And just recently, in a case that's come up for me, I'm a criminal defense attorney, I spent an hour on the phone with a teacher from Expo, who was just telling me how great this one kid was. And Expo doesn't really have a, you can be, go to Expo from wherever, but I really think you have to realize that housing is so personal, it's where you grew up, it's your neighborhood, it's your connections, it's your friends, it's your family, and we need to have this so that kids can stay in the same school and build those relationships and not be living out of a car and going to six different schools. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call the question.
Counsel, get a chance to talk before we vote.
Yeah. I'd like to rescind that call.
Do we have anyone else real quickly?
I just had a comment.
And then, counsel?
Thank, thank you, sir. I just had, I just wanted to thank the people that came today, because so often when we enact a res, you know, an ordinance that gets stricter and tougher for people to, to comply with, that we, we get more people showing up objecting to it, and today it was unanimous for people coming. Because I understand what's going on here, and I hope we can work towards getting another rental inspector. And the reason I say that is I, when, when I worked at the fire department and the inspections and the fire marshal's office, I was in charge of the rental inspection program at that time, and I understand everything you guys are going through. I've seen what you have seen, and, and I thank you for your support for us tightening this up. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor? So, for those of you who know me, housing has been one of my priorities over the last almost four years now that I've been on council. And I have toured during the height of the pandemic, some housing locations that I would not subject the worst criminal on the face of this earth to live in. And we have folks in our community living in those places and having to pay what I feel, and really any dollar amount is exorbitant, but exorbitant rates for those, for those housing establishments. Housing is a fundamental human right, because if we are not secure in where we live, where we rest our head, where we consume our meals, and where we dream our dreams, and where we play and build our children's future, then nothing else is secure. And for too many families in Waterloo, because they rent, because they live on the cusp of society, they aren't secure. And they are often voiceless, because they have to work some of the toughest jobs with some of the toughest hours, with some of the toughest childcare needs of anyone in this city, and they don't get to come here. So I'm very thankful for folks who did come here and speak tonight. We have to do better, because no one in this city in God's year of 2022 should live in those conditions. It's not acceptable. And for those folks who think that this is aimed at, at all landlords, it's not. Ms. Younger said it right. This is aimed at bad landlords. If you are here to exploit folks, to make money, that day is done. And tomorrow, we're going to start a new dawn where we're going to level the playing field for renters and landlords. Not tilt the scales, but ensure true equality for those who need housing and those who provide it, just like we need equality when any service is provided. Now, this is just a first step, as many of the folks talked about, and in our budgets, we're going to need to look at getting more rental inspectors, because all of this is nice on paper, but if it is not enacted in reality, it is written on sand and not on the stone tablets of law, and it needs to be written on the stone tablets of law. Thank you.
Ms. Wilder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo what counsel has said, and I appreciate you all for being here. So for me, being the only person up here that still rents their home, I share the exact sentiments as you. And while I'm here, I'm going to ensure that we have better houses to sleep in, because this directly affects my life. So, thank you for being here.
May I comment, Mr. Nichols? Just really quickly, so in 19, I can't remember if it was 59 or 68, 60, within that timeframe, there was a civil rights study that was done here in our local community. It said, two of the biggest disparities were education and housing. And I remember when I first started as mayor, I said, I'm gonna tear down every house, right, that's dilapidated. And then someone brought me an article, and that article showed me where three other mayors, prior to me taking office, said the exact same thing. And so when you take a look at the conversation about housing, we have some systemic issues that we need to fix, from economic disparities to quality of life in neighborhoods to rental ordinances. So one of the things, and I hate to say I was blessed to do, was to put together a housing program that helped to fix up over 300 houses for those within our community for $0 through grant funds. But what we quickly found out in working along with Mr. Jones, that, that's not even close to enough. So one of the first things we started to do was form an internal task force, our housing task force committee internally, because we hear about what's on the books, and, you know, the fact of the matter is, you can have ordinances on the books, but if you don't have a mechanism to enforce them, then you're just putting more things on the paper to enforce. And so then we started working with the University of Iowa, it was Mr. Bozen and Mr. Greider, remember having those conversations, to figure out, how do we take a systemic look at the issues and challenges that we have? Then we had the 2018 report as well. And if you do a windshield look across parts of our community, housing, housing is one of the largest challenges that we have today, just like it was back in the early, mid 60s as well. And so the whole goal and the whole purpose about putting these ordinances in place is that we are going to put a stamp in history with this and say that, no more, no more. We're going to work together collectively with a number of different partners, including our landlord associations, which we've had conversations about this very ordinance. And as was mentioned by several people, this is not directed at good landlords, this is directed at bad landlords. And if you can't keep a decent house, then get out the business. And so that's what we're doing, but it also makes us take a look at our shortcomings. For instance, it was mentioned about housing inspectors and how we could collaboratively work. It also, we're also taking a look at, number two in our strategic plan is elevate housing, and that is to fix up more than 800 homes within our local community that are rental units, but also to try to build 800 new units. And so this is, this is not just, yes, it's an ordinance, but this is a movement that we need to have across our entire community. So this is just the beginning from work that's being done behind the scenes, so that we can make Waterloo what our strategic vision is, and that Waterloo is a community of opportunity for everyone. So thank you for the voices that's here. Thanks, Kelly, Wendy, Rudy, and the rest of our internal task force that I'm forgetting, and then all of the partners and foundations that have come together, so that we can start seeing some movement in this area. Would you?
Thank you for all of your kind words, counsel, but I'm ready to get this thing passed so we can get going. So I'd like to call the question.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file considering passed for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Can I get a second? That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Someone take number 36? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, receive file considering passed for the first time, an ordinance amending the city, an ordinance adding fees for service for solid waste collection and disposal. Let me finish this, I guess. I, I've got to finish this. City Waterloo ordinance is by adding subsection six transaction fees in subsection A, section six fees for service, chapter three solid waste collection disposal, title four, public health and safety.
Can I get a second? That motion's been made with the second. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda?
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. I'd like a whole lot of elaboration on that. Who's it gonna affect? What's it going to be, or, you know, who's, who's paying the tab? Is my garbage fee gonna go up, which we already know that's gonna happen? What, what more charges are you gonna put on us that is, a fee is a tax?
All right, Mr. Bennett?
Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. What this is, is the ordinance is updating with a new implementation of bratware. So some of the fees for which we're looking at doing is trying to rectify individuals who are actually abusing the system. Just to give an example, we have individuals that sometimes switch carts. They see the neighbor that has a large and they have a medium, and they will switch that. We also have some issues with residents who are taking the RFAD tags off, so that we were not able to register them. So when we actually catch individuals who are abusing the system, because what we're trying to do is correct individuals who are actually abusing the system, so everyone else that's doing it right, unfortunately, is costing them more. So it's actually more of an enforcement for... So it's actually more of an enforcement for, to stop individuals that are abusing the system. And so, you know, it's not offsetted by those who are doing it right.
So is that?
Does that answer?
Okay, so that's not something you're gonna charge me to take my grass and branch stuff out now all of a sudden, or?
You take that tag off, there's gonna be serious repercussions. You switch a garbage can, garbage can with your neighbor, there's gonna be repercussions. That's what he's doing.
Okay, it just doesn't, it's kinda, kinda, not really kinda, it's kinda, it's really vague.
You got Randy's number.
It sounds like another fee you're gonna charge me for going to the grass and, and branch recycle, or? That's probably coming.
Not yet.
Not yet, thank you, sir.
Why don't you give Randy a, you wanna give Randy a call tomorrow and he can walk you through it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, sounds good. It just, it's vague for the rest of the citizens who watch the council meeting.
Yeah. And just to maybe elaborate a little bit more, and right now, this is just updating the ordinance. We'll still have another work session when we actually have the fee structure, which we can go into a little bit more depth at that time. Right now, this is just getting that first phase, but then hopefully that'll explain some more too. But I'm willing to discuss it if you've got time.
All right, thank you. Council, Madam Clerk.
All right, Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
And Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
And Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, consider, and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Thank you. 37 through 39.
Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving project agreement with Water Development Corporation, the amount not to exceed $914,975 in conjunction with the design and construction of enhancements, including lighting on the Forest Street Bridge, Cedar River Dam, and surrounding area, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 38 is a resolution approving project agreement with Water Development Corporation in an amount not to exceed $36,980 in conjunction with a downtown lighting improvement study, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 30 is a resolution approving a sign proposal with associated controls and design in the amount of $40,219 in conjunction with the FY 2022 Forest Street Bridge Dam Lighting Project Contract Number 1054.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Any questions about these items?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Forest Dilaboo, 1725 Huntington Road. On number seven, I would like to know how that is going to be funded. This bridge was built with TIF funds. The recent repair was done with taxpayer dollars, non-TIF funds. Now, this is going to have a big lighting upgrade. I would like to know if TIF funds are gonna be used? And if who is going to pay the electric bill for all these new lights?
Mrs. Weidner can answer the questions. He wants to know how much TIF money we gotta use on this? Will we use TIF money? If we'll use TIF money? And whose TIF money will we use?
Okay, Michelle Weidner, Chief Financial Officer. I'm sorry, I just managed to knock that right off of there. So this project is being completely funded with donations. There will be no city money in construction. We will have to pay the utilities for the lighting. It's all LED lighting. Hopefully, those costs will be minimal compared to the benefit we're gonna get from the project.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that.
Mr. Dreyer, please, come on, but there's notes.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I guess I'm glad to find out that it's being funded by donations, but it goes all the way down through 43. It doesn't stop at 39. There's a lot of money being spent here, and I'm wondering how much of this is gonna be taxpayer money? I keep complaining about the situation. What's that?
That's what Mrs. Weidner was saying. This is, this is, we've got support, we just did a ribbon cutting and had our funders there for this Veterans Way project, which I know you, thank you so much for your service. But a large majority of all of this is coming from grant funds, from Gaming to Mid-America, to the WDC. So we're very thankful for charitable partners in making this project a reality.
So what you're telling me is that number 37, 914, 915,000, 915, 975 is the total? Or do you add all 37 through 43 together, and that's all being granted, or being?
It's all.
Yeah, so Michelle Weidner again, it is a little bit confusing. The first item, number 37, I think it is on that agenda, is an agreement to, with another entity that's gonna pay for the improvements, $900,000. The total project is actually more like 1.7 million, and there will be more agreements coming. So the, the other motions that you see on the agenda are contracts that are being entered into to actually build it. But that first one is an agreement for how it's gonna be paid for. So it is confusing because we have a number of items on there. But yeah, there is not planned to be taxpayer money going to construction at all.
Okay.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, could someone take 40 through 43?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. Number 40 is a resolution approving a signed proposal with landscape forms in the amount of $15,984.70 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2022 Forest Street Bridge and Dam Lighting Project Contract Number 1054. Number 41 is a resolution approving a signed proposal with Lumen Pulse in the amount of $443,370 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2022 Forest Street Bridge and Dam Lighting Project Contract Number 1054. Number 42 is a resolution approving a signed proposal with Tyler Trust Systems in the amount of $153,031.94 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2022 Forest Street Bridge and Dam Lighting Project Contract Number 1054. And 43 is a resolution approving a signed proposal with Thomas Industrial Coatings in the amount of $98,280 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2022 Forest Street Bridge and Dam Lighting Projects Contract Number 1054.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Right now, we have the most patient people that ever existed right now, and that is representatives and partners from Magellan. Mr. Courtney, do you want to come up? And this is exciting. This is a discussion of city fiber network plans. So we want to welcome Courtney Violet. I don't know if it's CFO, COO, or COO. Oh, you. At Lona. Anyone need to go to the restroom? Are we good? All right, let's. I'm hungry.
Can I help you? It does? Oh, yeah.
We are ready. So, Mr. Violet, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're ready to go.
Yes, we are.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Courtney Violet with Magellan Advisors. Excited to be here in Waterloo this evening. One moment. Counsel, we're here this evening to give you an update on the fiber project here within the city of Waterloo. Our agenda, we're gonna give you an up, a background update on the project. We're gonna talk about business models and deployment options. One second. There we go. And then we'll talk through some recommendations and next steps. As you may know, we've been at this since January of 2020. We had a little bit of delay in 2020 due to COVID, and we performed most of the assessment remotely during that time. Last year in April, City Council authorized design of both the backbone and fiber to the home project. And so that's been underway for the last year. We are currently at 90% design, so the design is coming to a completion. And we're at a point where we can start developing construction bids and all of the other things that come along with this project to move it forward. So very exciting. We do intend on being done with design by August of this year, so just in a couple of months. During this time, we've worked very closely with the mayor and city staff from finance and public works and engineering. A lot of collaboration over the last year on, through this design process, so we appreciate that time. We've also talked a lot over this time about different business models and concepts as to how the city could deploy fiber, again, throughout the city of Waterloo. Two real project goals through this project. First and foremost was the development of a fiber backbone that would interconnect city facilities, sites, parks, traffic cabinets, utility assets, and important public spaces. And then also a plan to provide ubiquitous high-speed internet to every home and business across the city of Waterloo. There also are a couple of opportunities we want to speak to, most notably the fact that it's a great time to build networks. There is tons of funding out there and available, as many of you likely know. There is ARPA funding that's out there and available. There's also additional grants that are in formation, and details are starting to come out. You've got great opportunities to partner with local communities that are doing the same thing and that have developed assets and infrastructure over the years that the city of Waterloo could take advantage of if it decides to move forward here. And then also, obviously, I said a minute ago, leverage any additional funding that may be available by way of potential grants or any of the other funding programs that are in development. As I mentioned, there's really two components to this project. The first is the backbone, and that's depicted here. We have over 100 miles designed to connect several hundred sites throughout the city. Again, these are your city sites and facilities, like community centers, fire stations, city hall. It's also your utility assets, as well as traffic cabinets, parks, and other locations that have been identified. We have our cost estimates that are outlined here on the right-hand side for this project. The top portion of the project is the actual construction costs to build out the network, estimated about $27 million, and additional costs to connect the hundreds of devices and, or hundreds of sites that have been identified. So those portions of cost towards the bottom, roughly a million and a half dollars, just over a million and a half, are actual for equipment and racks and facilities within each of your sites to connect to the network. The green routes here that you see on this map are the primary backbone routes throughout the city. It's meant to interconnect all major corridors and all major areas of the city. And then the red lines that you see are extensions off to hit your city sites and facilities. The second part of this project, and again, you see the screen on the left-hand side, is to ensure that a fiber line runs down every street throughout the city so that every home or business has the opportunity to connect into the network. The distribution part of this design, which again, is your blue components of the network here, is about 390 miles, so the entire network build is just over 500 miles throughout the city. On the right-hand side, again, you can see the cost breakdowns. This is three times more distance, three and a half times more distance than the backbone. Costs are much higher. The total build-out for fiber to the home is just under 62 million, with another approximately 25 million in additional facilities. These are buildings that, small buildings that would be located throughout the city that would house electronics and equipment. General equipment and tools, trucks, splicing equipment, testing units, core network equipment, including routers and switches and software, as well as drops to the homes that connect. So the way this works, the $18 million in the last line there is really an incremental cost that's expended as homes are connected. That's not an upfront cost that's part of construction, but as homes are connected, you have to spend the cost to actually connect each of the homes. And so that is based on roughly 35% of your homes, businesses, and MDUs taking service. We, we completed a consumer survey back in April. Hopefully, many of you participated in that survey. Over 2,700 responses, which we think is a fairly good response rate for a community this size. You can see a few of the stats here that we've collected. Again, a number of service providers are here and available within the city, as you know. MediaCom and CenturyLink are your two biggest providers that are here providing service today. You can see the median speeds that we captured from the surveys themselves. So about 75 meg is the median download speed and about 22 meg upload. And then towards the right-hand side, you can see various questions we asked the respondents. How often does your internet go down? Approximately 56% of those respondents experienced noticeably slow internet multiple times a week or even daily. You can also see about half of them were dissatisfied with current prices and provider support that they're receiving. This data is out there and available. We've passed it on city staff, so it should be available to you as well. Once we've wrapped up the bulk of the design process, we also started to look at how we would roll out potential construction for a project like this. As you can see on the map here, each of those colored squares or polygon areas are essential fiber deployment areas. We identified about 136 of them throughout the city. You're averaging somewhere around 250 homes or per connection, or connections per neighborhood. And what we did here was worked to prioritize the neighborhoods as it related to a lot of different data that we collected through this process. As some of you may know, the grant funding that's available, both ARPA as well as grant funds that are coming down, all, all have certain eligibility requirements, right? So we wanted to look at some of those in here and rank the areas based on not only accessibility, but also affordability, reliability. We looked at income levels in certain areas. And again, tried to make sure that we could prioritize this in a way that made sense and that also allowed you to take advantage of any funding that you have available that, again, has specific requirements around eligibility as to where it's spent. We took numerous data sources and created a methodology to, to rank these areas. The areas in yellow or light are a higher priority. The areas in dark are a little bit lesser priority. Number of details in this spreadsheet that we collected, so route distances, right? How much construction was necessary in each given neighborhood? What's the average cost per foot in that neighborhood, right? In the rural areas around the outer edges of the city, it's gonna be less of a cost per foot than more in the densely populated areas of the city where you have concrete, right? And you have other obstacles in kind of the urban-built environment. We also looked at a number of households within a given area. We looked at the cost per household. We looked at whether or not it was a recognized low-motor income area by housing and urban development. We also looked at the number of surveys that were captured in each of the neighborhoods and the speed tests data that we received. And then lastly, we wanted to identify whether or not it met the requirement based on the survey data we collected if the users were receiving 100 meg by 20, which is really the targeted speeds that Treasury and the administration right now is, is pushing. From this, we devised. Hey, Chris, this isn't going. We were, we created a potential build plan. So we identified potentially a three-phase build-out plan. You can see, based on the cost of each of those phases in the left-hand side, again, we tried to break it up into three phases, kind of equal phases. What you'll notice on some of these in phase one, right, there's almost 11,000 homes at a cost of about $14.7 million. You can see. You can see as you get to phase three, right, almost eighty-nine hundred homes at a cost of sixteen million. So, so the methodology, the process, right, of connecting as many homes as we can for the least amount of money, uh, and then connecting, right, everyone else in phase two and phase three, uh, kind of proved itself out here. So from a potential build plan, you can see here, right, we would focus on the areas in green first, followed by yellow, followed by red. Uh, again, trying to connect as many homes and businesses as possible with the money you have. And again, we, we've talked, uh, at length over the last several months as to what the right model is for the city of Waterloo. And there's really two models that we feel the city could deploy under. Um, what is the retail provider model? So, you know, this is the CFU model, if you will, right? Where the city builds out the network, deploys the services, right? Answers the phones, take care of the customers, and provides the full retail experience. Uh, we've estimated in here triple play, so again, high-speed internet, voice, uh, as well as cable TV or video services. And, uh, the other model we looked at was more of an open access, right? The city builds out the infrastructure and then looks with and partners with industry to come in and actually provide the service using a licensing agreement to generate revenue, where providers that come in and use your network, again, are paying you for the access and paying you to be here, uh, to partner with the city. Wanted to make sure you understood, uh, some of the pros and cons of each. Uh, so those are here, uh, on the slide deck. Uh, you know, most importantly, from a retail provider perspective, right? It does put the city in the full control, in the driver's seat, to determine, uh, how, when, where, uh, you deploy services. It also allows you to keep a hundred percent of the revenue generated from the system. Uh, you don't have partners that are taking portions and parts of that revenue. Uh, supports the local Waterloo community, right? The decision-makers under this, uh, model are sitting right here at the dais. Uh, and you are able to use your strong, uh, city image and brand to carry that through, uh, for the operation, uh, of the utility. Uh, you have the legal authority, as I understand it. This was passed several years ago, the referendum. And again, uh, you have great opportunities to partner, uh, with peer municipalities here in the region that are doing the same, uh, and are doing really well at it. From an open access perspective, you know, it can reduce the operational risk, uh, because you're leveraging, right, a, a provider that's in, that would come into town and that does this day in and day out. Uh, there would be some cost sharing and obviously the, uh, introduction of new competition in the market. And again, it meets the goal of expanding high-speed broadband coverage across the city. Uh, lots of, you know, number of, of cons on each of these. Uh, obviously, in order to do this on your own, you have to be able to finance and fund the project, right? That's the first hurdle. Uh, second, you know, construction, management, operations of a telecom isn't something you do today. And so it is a new, uh, process, it's a new, uh, business you're getting into. Staffing's required, right, for anything you do. Uh, this is no different. And, uh, there's a staffing plan that we've built as part of the, the project. Um, competition, right? That's something that you don't do today from a water sewer perspective, right? You're a monopoly, uh, not so much here, right? So the city would be entering into competitive space. And then obviously, any technological risks or any uncertainties in the market. Uh, the one thing I would say is we do know that fiber is the gold standard, right? And we can, we know that that will be the gold standard for years to come. From a pros perspective on the open access side, again, less city control, loss of revenue opportunity. Uh, you're going to have some operating costs that you have to, uh, pay for to, to manage and maintain the network. You know, there are no partners identified as of right now, so we don't know specifically, uh, what those contributions could be or what the revenues would look like. Um, and again, uh, market failures, abandonments, right? There could be legal risks or challenges, uh, as well. Some key decisions, uh, in direction that, you know, we're looking from the council, uh, for is, you know, first of all, what model makes the most sense, uh, for the city? Is it the retail model? Uh, is it more of an open ax, access model where you own the infrastructure, but you look to partner with providers to provide the end-user service? Uh, or do you start on the backbone and take more of a wait-and-see approach on fiber to the home? From a funding perspective, uh, as I understand it, there are some ARPA allocations that have been potentially earmarked for broadband. Um, so that's a consideration. Uh, the rest of the financing would likely come from bonds, uh, or some other finance instrument. And then, as I mentioned, there's also some state and federal grants that are working their way down. We'll have to see if Waterloo qualifies or is eligible for any of those funds. Uh, but we have our ear to the pavement and make sure we're, uh, keeping a good eye on that. Finally, I think there are some timelines, uh, if you should go the GEO bond election route. Uh, there is deadlines of next month to really get that language into, uh, the county. Uh, and so that is also a consideration. Um, as far as the, the project and where we're at, again, we're going to finalize design in August. Uh, project will be stamped, we'll have all the final engineers' estimates, we'll have the complete design package. Be ready to go to procurement, uh, as soon as, uh, the design is complete. Uh, we are working on the RFP for both OSP contractors as well as, uh, materials. And then, uh, you know, once this moves forward and you are in construction, there's a whole host of other, uh, project components, facilities, equipment, and agreements that have to be procured. Uh, with that, I'm here for any other questions. Uh, Mayor?
All right, counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is there, uh, looking at the retail provider option, mentions here that'd be a hundred percent city revenue. Is there any estimation on a potential timing when that revenue would come in? Or the amount of potential revenue based on our city, um, landscape?
Yes, sir, we do, we have all those details.
Mr. Mayor, are you done, sir? And, and we're looking at different funding sources, the ARPA, maybe GEO bond or whatever, but, but as we bring customers on board, if we did our standalone system, we would also be creating revenue to build out, correct?
You would be. As you start to cash flow, uh, yes, you would be, uh, cash rolling capital expenses after certain years.
So that, that's, that's something to look at too, because of, what, what you're looking at, at some of the, what we might have to, to look at financing, that may, that, that may change as we build out.
It will, it will.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions right now? All right, well, thank you so much, uh, lot of work, uh, a lot of great stuff happening and, uh, a couple of options for counsel to really take a deep dive, look and see, uh, in which direction they, uh, want to go. So that is, uh, it for, uh, this portion of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Um, Mr. Um, man of distinction and, and law man himself, Mr. Zellifer, are we doing this in order?
Dave Zellifer, acting city attorney, former city attorney. We are able to do this pursuant to Iowa Code Section Three Eighty-eight point nine one for the purpose of discussing marketing and pricing strategies or proprietary information of a city utility if its competitive position would be harmed by public disco, disclosure not required of potential or actual competitors, and if no public purpose would be served by such disclosure. First time I've ever had to do this in thirty years, so.
All right, all right. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you, uh, we're adjourned to executive session.